Sort of a reporter on one of my colleagues. And I, I, I really have trouble with that. This reminds me of the discussion we had a few years ago at which there was a vote. And I think Brandon and probably Leah will remember this, where we now have a policy. I don't believe it's a rule, but if an attorney is simply charged with a criminal offense, there is a warning and a notice that's put on their state bar profile. And I was adamant against that. And we argued and debated that and so forth because there, it doesn't even have to be a probable cause finding. There doesn't have to be anything, you know, an ex-wife who's angry because you didn't take the garbage out, reports a crime to the police, and now it gets put on the attorney's profile in the state bar. Well, that passed. I was the only one who voted against it. And I actually ended up representing an attorney in a very, very serious case. The warning went up on this attorney's webpage. Ultimately, thank goodness, just a few months ago, we got a not guilty verdict on all 15 counts. So as George knows, I called right away and said, take that thing down. But this reminds me of, of that and how I, I was troubled by this. I, when I say I look at it in terms of mandatory reporting, we sort of do, right? There are mandatory reporters in our society, police and psychologists and other types of things. And one of the things about those, those types of statutes is that under certain circumstances, that person has to report to a local agency, whatever it is, if there's a sex abuse crime or there's something like that. The person can only get in trouble if they're a mandatory reporter. If they don't report, then it would be a misdemeanor. If they do report, they're insulated from liability. Now, one of the things, I think one of their trustees talked about was that, and I understand that if somehow down the road, it turned out that you have lawyer A, who let's say took some money out of a client trust account, and lawyer B knew about it and didn't report it, lawyer B cannot be, now be subject to disciplinary proceedings, anywhere from a reapproval to a suspension for three years as I read this rule. But what happens if, under the scenario that you committed fraud, and so I'm going to report you, and maybe there's an investigation, and maybe there's some sort of a, something that gets out, and the attorney is exonerated? Does he have a right to sue the person that made the claim against him with the state bar? Did that affect his license to practice? Did somehow this go on as, you know, in his public, his public profile or it got out somehow? I don't see anything in here that would protect an attorney from, from doing this. The other thing, well, several other things, but as was pointed out previously, there's nothing to prevent an attorney from making a complaint without being a mandatory reporter. I'll give you an example. A few years ago, there was an attorney who sent a letter out to a client that was extortion. You either pay this bill or settle this case, all right, or we're gonna, we're gonna report you for whatever the crime was. That's extortion. You cannot do that. We called the state bar. The state bar investigated the case. That was a clear violation of his ethical duties. I didn't have any rule to do that. The other, just one thing in general, I don't know how you enforce this rule. What does, what does a criminal act mean? Does that mean it has to be filed? I mean, as Brandon will tell you, even prosecutors have discretion and they have differences of opinion about what constitutes a criminal act. What does that mean? What does credible evidence mean? What is it that I know, for example, the licensing knows of credible evidence that indicates these, these other things? What is fraud? What are these other things? To me, it's just too vague to be enforceable as an act here. So as to the, and I agree with, I agree with trustee Tony that I'd like to know what the costs are, but if I just looked at it, if it's a 20% increase in the number of cases, George's office is going to have to be increased by 20%, right? I mean, he's going to have 20% more cases, he's going to have 20% more cost. And that's kind of the way I look at it here. So do we have the ability to do that? I don't think we do. But I'm really troubled by this, by this rule. And as it sits right now, I realize, believe me, that our duty is to protect the public, but I just don't see how this does, this adds to it. The other thing is that, again, talking about what Ruben spoke about, if the legislature's going to pass a law, I think that we're duty bound then to, to, to enact that, to, to follow that law. But I don't know that we have to do it ahead of time. Because as George pointed out, you might have a difference in how the language goes. So I don't know how I'm going to vote right now. My inclination is to say I don't like either of the alternatives, but I would be open to further discussion. Thanks.
Thank you, trustee Broughton. Trustee Good, please.
Thanks. I just thought I would sort of give everybody a sense of where I'm at on this. And I do agree with a lot of trustee Knowles' comments about fiscal impact and that we have sufficient information from the staff to adjudicate that here, and it's as good as it gets. So where I'm at is, I think adopting something is important. One, because we have an obligation to protect the public. Two, because we're, we are coming from a place of trying to rebuild trust in the state bar as an institution. And I think that this is one of the necessary reforms that we need to take along with everything else that the state bar is doing. I am also concerned, as I mentioned at the last meeting, about weaponization of this rule in civil litigation. I've been a litigator for over 30 years, and civility is real and weaponization will be real. It's just an unfortunate and sad reality of the way the practice is in California or can be in California. So for me, the way that I have balanced all of those competing interests is, I'm fully in favor of alternative one, the COBRAC rule. I think that it is sufficiently delineated, sharp and clear to provide guidance to lawyers on what they're supposed to be doing so that they can comply. Alternative two, which the staff put together, and I appreciate all the staff's work on it, in my mind is too opaque and vague. And while I appreciate the sentiment behind it, to go broader than alternative one, and I wouldn't be opposed to that if we had the right language, the implementation just isn't there for me, and I don't think that it's fair to adopt it and have attorneys held to a standard that I think is unclear. And so the way that I go is, I'm going to support alternative one. I'm open to doing something broader, but it's not alternative two. But I'm okay with sending both of them up to the Supreme Court for the Supreme Court to decide the issue, with the note that, that I at least believe in the COBRAC version because of kind of the competing demands here, trying to balance weaponization with protecting the public and, and frankly, doing the right thing here, which is ultimately protecting the public. So that's all I wanted to say. Thanks.
Thank you, trustee Good. I'm going to look to Ms. Doherty, Mr. Cardona, Ms. Wilson. Is there anything that you, you'd like to add by way of further information that might inform the debate that I think the board is about to have?
Sure. If I could be very brief. Oh, sorry, George, did you want to? Go ahead. Okay. So just in, in response to trustee Broughton regarding the, the civil liability concerns surrounding complaints. So that is actually addressed in the rule in the comments regarding the statutory civil immunity. So that's within Business and Professions Code 1694, which basically says that communications related to an investigation proceeding, et cetera, within the state bar, you can't predicate a lawsuit, a lawsuit thereon. So within 1694, there is that exemption. I think we talked about this in March. That doesn't mean that someone may not try to file such lawsuit, but there is that provision within the Business and Professions Code. In regards to trustee Good, the alternative one versus alternative two, I just, to give bigger context to the issue, I just do want to remind everyone that, you know, every other jurisdiction, for the most part, with some, you know, slight tweaks here and there, has a version of model rule 8.3, which goes much broader than what alternative two or alternative one are proposing. You know, there's the, the same arguments to be made about those other jurisdictions regarding some concerns about vagueness of what must be reported, and they, they have been able to, to handle those concerns. I'm not saying that's the approach that, that California needs to take. I just wanted to provide that additional context.
Thank you, Ms. Doherty. With respect to every other jurisdiction, I know you're talking about every other state in the nation. I, I'm, I could be wrong, and certainly, please correct me, staff, if you know that I am wrong. But I believe it is the case that Tom Girardi himself was, was prosecuted in, for a disciplinary violation in Illinois, perhaps, because of their mandatory, or as, in part because of their mandatory reporting rule. Do you have any information on that?
Yeah, so Illinois' version of 8.3 is very similar to what's being proposed in alternative two. So, and that's correct. That's, I apologize if I don't know the lawyer's name, but that's why they reported on those, because of their 8.3 obligation. Illinois is arguably the state with the narrowest version of 8.3. There are two other jurisdictions that have something that would be perhaps considered to be more narrow. That's Georgia, because they do not require, they do not provide for discipline for a failure to report, which means that, you know, there's an argument to me that's discretionary because there's nothing, there's no penalty for failing to do so. And then Washington State makes it discretionary as well.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Cardona, do you still have something?
No, I was just going to note the comment that cites the Business and Professions Code 1694, and also on the fiscal issue, just note that even if we got a doubling of attorney complaints from 500 to 1,000 in any given year within the variance that we have across the number of complaints, I would not expect that to impose significant costs in terms of handling the overall caseload.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Wilson, you good?
I just would say, I think it's-
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you, Mr. Cardona.
Oh.
What I said was, as compared to our overall caseload, the number of attorney complaints is low. It's somewhere between 380 and 500. Even if that were to double, it's a, it's just not that significant a portion of our total caseload, and so I would not expect any significant increase in costs in terms of handling that as part of our total caseload.
Okay. Thank you, George. Leah.
I just want to share my view that I, I don't think it's viable any longer for California to be the only state without some version of this rule. I don't think it's viable politically, and I don't think it's the right thing to do. I, I do believe that there is some expectation that we are not going to advance a rule for substantive reasons, some of which have been articulated very eloquently by some of our board members, or perhaps for fiscal ones. And I think that would be an unfortunate result, that would play into the narrative that the state bar isn't really genuinely about reform. So I think that we have, you know, staff has done incredible work, and that's not me, you know, as you can see, Erica is truly our new rules guru, and we're very lucky to have her. But staff, to develop this alternative two, I, I don't personally pretend to be expert enough to know, to weigh in strongly in favor of version one or version two, other than to say, we have been explicitly told by Senator Umberg's staff that he is not particularly positive about alternative one. Should the board choose not to act, we absolutely know what will happen, as B42 will be implemented, and that is the model rule, which is the most expansive of all. So I don't think that's the outcome that would be best, either from a policy perspective or a fiscal one. So, you know, those are my remarks, I just encourage the board to, to act and send something forward, and perhaps trustee Good's idea about sending forward both options to the court is, is one path for the board to consider.
Trustee Chen, trustee Chen.
Could I ask a question about alternative two? And this gets to something that trustee Good raised about the vagueness of the language in alternative two, and about a concern that trustee Buena Ventura raised about, you know, dishonesty, conduct involving dishonesty or conduct involving deceit. I feel like we can all imagine, you know, every day opposing counsel can say that about us, or we could say that about them, what we allege in their complaint, what we say in our answer, what they said in a meet and confer. People will say, that was deceitful. I mean, just this week, I had an argument with opposing counsel about, you agreed to stipulate to this, and then there was like a, no, I didn't, I'm not going to sign this. Is that deceitful? Is that dishonest? Is there guidance? Like, is there another rule that we can point to that defines those terms?
So, so no, I can answer that. There, there is not. So that, there's also, this type of conduct is a violation under rule 8.4. But to my knowledge, and George, feel free to chime in if I'm wrong, there's nothing within that rule itself that, that defines those terms. There's, there's certainly a definition for fraud. It's one of the asterisk terms in the rule, so that's defined in 1.0.1. But those other, you know, dishonesty and deceit and reckless or intentional misrepresentation, those are not defined. Those are addressed by case law.
So I just, I mean, for me, like fraud or reckless or intentional misrep, those have an element of intent in it, right? Those are things that we as lawyers understand have elements of intent, but, but dishonesty, I guess deceit, sort of. It's just so unclear, like what makes something dishonest? Did you have to know it was false at the time you said it for it to be dishonest? You know, how, how does this dovetail with rule 11 in the federal rules of civil procedure? And, you know, people want to be zealous advocates when you're filing a complaint or when you're making an argument with the court. I just, I want, I really wonder what, what guidance there is on what triggers a reporting obligation.
We're the family lawyers in this group.
Honesty or mere puffery, which is one of my favorite legal terms, mere puffery.
I feel like some lawyers would say that what you do, what we do all the time is mere puffery, that there are many arguments that people make, and so-
Speak for yourself. I'm just kidding. Mr. Cardona, please.
I would just note that, as Erica noted, you know, these, these are basically already violations of 8.4. So we are already in a situation where attorneys can choose to report these, and you're going to have the same issues as to whether they should or not. I would also note that 6106 of the Business and Professions Code refers to dishonesty as one of the things that it, two punishes. So there is an, there is a body of case law defining, you know, what's dishonesty, what's deceit for purposes of the rules and for purposes of 6106 in particular in California.
And I would just imagine that there are dozens of cases that are being prosecuted right now by OCTC and, and have been in front of the state bar court and ultimately the Supreme Court that also elaborate on that, right? Also inform that.
Yes, that's why, I, I mean, there is a, there is a body of case law that defines what it means to make dishonest statements, misrepresentations, when you're engaging in deceit, all of which are things that can be proceeded on under the current rules. And also, there's a body of case law in the state bar court, because often these things also serve as aggravating factors, so there's also a body of law there addressing and trying to define what, what, what these are and when they constitute a basis for discipline and when they constitute an aggravating factor.
Trustee Stallings caught my attention, then I see trustee Broughton, and then I think maybe we'll take a bio break after trustee Broughton, and then come back and I'll ask for a motion to get us going.
So it seems to me that the broader the, the rule, it seems to me that the broader the rule, the more discretionary calls an attorney is going to have to make as to whether or not sufficient information is present in order to make the complaint, or if certain conduct rises to that level of dishonesty, fraud, deceit, et cetera. Has there been any thought about at what point that lawyer becomes a witness in the matter and now has a potential conflict and is, and is unable to represent their client going forward? Because now they have some sort of material interest in their discretionary call in a particular situation. So now they're, you know, they could be subject to a state bar complaint filed against them for failure to report. And so is this going to increase the level or increase the amount of conflicts that could be raised and then also damage the public in a kind of a different unintended consequence sort of way? And now lawyers, lawyers are like, oh, man, I should have maybe made a different judgment call there. Now my bar card's on the line, I have to get out, and now further costs are, are passed on to the consumer.
So I, I can, I mean, I'll, I'll point to comment three.
Is your mic on, George? I'm sorry.
Sorry. And I'm, I'll let Erica correct, but I think the answer to that question is attempted to be dealt with by comment three, which allows a lawyer, in other words, the duty is to ordinarily report without undue delay, but comment three makes clear that a lawyer, that reporting can be delayed if the lawyer reasonably believes the reporting would cause material prejudice or damage to the interests of their client. And so that's built in, so the lawyer can balance those. And if they do make a decision that there's going to be material prejudice or damage to the interests of the client from reporting at a particular time, they can defer that reporting until that damage will be done, until that damage will not be done. And Erica, I think, if you had anything, am I pointing to the correct comment there?
Yes, yes, you are. So yeah, so essentially, if there is, you know, if there is a likely prejudice to the client by reporting, or if it would require, you know, the, the attorney to withdraw because of their conflicting duties, they can delay reporting for that reason. Unbelievable.
But I guess my main question, though, is having that additional level of a discretionary call on part of the attorney, does that, again, open it up to more potential harm to the public in having that attorney, you know, leading the conflict off if they make that wrong discretionary call?
I mean, I think, I would just say, I think this is true of many rules, many of the disciplinary rules where lawyers are having to make judgment calls as to, could I engage in this conduct? What's the risk to my client, et cetera? So yes, there's going to be some judgment calls there and some discretion exercise. There will also be discretion on our part as to, you know, looking at the facts as a whole, does this warrant going after the attorney for a violation of 8.3 or whatever version of 8.3 were adopted? So as with the other rules, there are going to be gray areas. I don't see any way of avoiding that.
Okay. Thank you. Trustee Broughton, please.
Yeah, I won't belabor this too much, but as, as pointed out, there are a couple of other rules that kind of encompass some of the things that are in this rule already. And what's different about this is it's a mandatory reporting statute. But another thing that really troubles me is committed a criminal act. That language bothers me in this particular context. And then with regard to what Highland was, was bringing up, in the other rule that defines the fraud, deceit, recklessness and so forth, can we not include that definition somewhere in this rule so that we, either as a note or somewhere, so that we know what that is?
Doherty, for that, I assume the answer is yes, right? I mean, this, at the, where it is right now with the board is to formulate as we feel best suited, and then decide whether to send something to the court or not. Okay. Let's break for five minutes, folks. It's three o'clock. Come back at 3:05, please. So we are recording again. Thank you, everyone, for accommodating a very quick break. We have snacks, and we are ready to have, to continue the conversation. Mr. Codona, thank you for your input, Ms. Doherty, Leah, everybody. As we were breaking, I, I went back in my memory over some conversations with legislators and others about the difference between what SB 42 proposes, essentially model rule 8.3, and what had come out of COPRAC and the general observation was that they were, I keep, you know, using my hands to show the difference, right? One extremely narrow COPRAC's version, one extremely broad, the legislature's versions, bottom model rule 8.3, and my, my desire as a leader of this organization, and I think Senator Umberg's desire as a leader in the legislature, with that through our respective processes, we would come to somewhere in the middle independently, but sort of informed, I think someone has already said it, right? Informed by each other's work. I'm still confident that if we get anywhere, that that's somewhere where I want to be. But I think the practical approach of ending up without a rule from the state bar and relying only on SB 42 or a version of it that is as broad, as expansive, as we see now, would have some, some very real fiscal impacts on the work of this organization ultimately, insofar as basically anything and everything is, is coming, right? Mandatory reporting is going to apply to every licensed lawyer for, Mr. Codona, correct me if I'm being hyperbolic here, but any, any little version of, any little transgression of the rules, and we are going to have a duty to take a close look and potentially investigate any or all, many, and/or all of those. And what does that mean for our fiscal situation?
Again, hard to predict, but potentially a, a greater fiscal impact. In other words, the broader version of 8.3, because it requires reporting of a violation of any rule, subject only to the limit that raises, whatever the limitation is in, in rule 8.3. But because it would require reporting on violation of any rule, the number of complaints, we would expect that to increase more, which potentially would have a more of a fiscal impact on us. I think that is a valid concern.
Okay. So only slight, only slightly hyperbolic on my part, I guess, and my, my fellow trustees will be the judge of that, I think, as, as the debate continues. To kick off the debate, let me just look around the table, and is there a motion? I heard something that sounded like, like it could have been a motion from trustee Good. I heard something, I think, from trustee, trustee Tony. Anybody can start this, this conversation? Somebody, please, start this conversation, I should say.
I'm waiting to second trustee Good.
Trustee Good, your hand is up.
So I make a motion that we strongly endorse and approve alternative one, COPRAC's rule, but send both alternative one and alternative two to the Supreme Court for its review and final decision-making. So that's what I would propose as a motion. Hopefully, I formulated that correctly.
I think you lost trustee Noel's second, but we'll see.
No, not now. I didn't want to make that call and send both. I think we should send both, which, which made sense to me when trustee Good was talking about it earlier, but separate from endorsing one or the other.
Right. So it sounds like on the, on the floor, we've got a motion from trustee Good to send both to the Supreme Court with a strong endorsement of option one by way of our preference? Is that an adequate way to say that, trustee Good? Is there a second on that motion?
All second.
Second by trustee Stelling that's on the table. Folks, please debate. Trustee Shelby wants to say something.
I just have a question from a clarification standpoint. So SB 42 is, in fact, moving forward, and there could be some conclusion on SB 42, which if we chose to move one of these forward, there could be some changes based on how SB 42 shakes out?
I don't know the answer to that question, because I only, I apologize for that.
I can restate it.
Okay.
It's a simple one. SB 42 is moving forward based on the conclusion of SB 42. If we were to advance one or both of these issues to the Supreme Court, how does the passage of SB 42 impact what we advance, if we choose to advance?
I'll give it to general counsel.
Sure. Thank you for the question. I think if, if the version of the SB 42 passes in a way that is broader than what we submit to the California Supreme Court or the California Supreme Court approves, then by rules of construction, the legislative amendment would, would supersede whatever rule that we, we adopt. If it aligns, I think we would need to just kind of review to see if there's any inconsistencies that would require us to repeal our own rule.
I, I just think the timing would be, we would send this to the court after this meeting, if the board approved it. SB 42 is now slated to be heard in the assembly, and I believe that, that schedule is for June. So this would be with the Supreme Court well before there would be action on SB 42, even at the, at the Assembly Judiciary Committee level. And I don't know if SB 42 is on the same cycle as our fee bill. I assume it is, but there we're looking at September, October enactment. So this would be with the court, and I think there's certainly opportunity for the court to issue its order before the conclusion of that process. And, and I do think we have the opportunity to inform that process if we act and the court acts.
I guess for me, because I haven't really weighed into the discussion, is that, A, I love that we've taken an incredible amount of time. And as I look at this agenda, and there are many proposed amendments, I'm curious to see how that shakes out for the balance of our conversation as it related to planning this agenda. But my concern is if we, if SB 42 is moving forward, and there's conversation, and we're working in partnership with judiciary on, in both houses, it would seem to me to just kind of take a pause rather than moving anything forward. When I looked at the fiscal impact, I didn't see that articulated under fiscal impact, where normally that's articulated in the staff report. It says, it says, paraphrasing, essentially, "look above." And so I know that there are other items on this agenda that really are focused on fiscal responsibility. So to move forward for me and not have any clarity as it relates to how this could potentially impact workload and, and finances, which I know is something we keep hearing that we've got to be really focused on, I just don't feel comfortable at this time. I think reform is important. I'm a public member and here to protect the public. Reform is critical. Reform is important. But I also think that we've got to get the work done that we've been tasked to do, which is addressing the backlog. And I think anything we do independent of that, when we don't achieve that in, in our work moving forward, will be challenging, particularly because I know that there is a, there is a hearing that's coming up on Tuesday focused on reform. So I think it'd be really interesting to hear what comes out of that conversation as it relates to this piece. So I am not in support, and I, and I just wanted to put that on record. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Shelby. Before I recognize trustee Broughton, I'd like the general counsel to just clarify a point that she made to me about trustee Good's motion, so that we're all clear on exactly. I, I think I misworded it a little bit.
Trustee Good, I just wanted to confirm that my understanding of the motion, that it would include approval of both alternatives for submission to the California Supreme Court, with just possible emphasis on option one.
I think that's right. I would put it a little stronger, that we strongly support option one, but we're sending both to the Supreme Court for their review and approval. Yes.
Yeah. Procedurally, we would need to have an approval of the both to submit to them. So that's, I just wanted to clarify that.
Just an extra special approval for one or the other. No parent has a favorite child. Trustee Broughton, please.
Just, just very quickly, if we do pass this in whatever form, is it going to be communicated with the legislature before the Supreme Court acts, or before they act on their Senate bill?
Oh, yes. Yes.
I mean, I think it's safe to say yes, of course. I mean, the, the conversations with our legislative partners are always ongoing. Certainly, I would take it upon myself to communicate with the chairs and the speaker's office for that matter, since I'm his appointee, as a major development here at the bar. Hands still up, Mark? Do you have another question?
Oops, sorry.
Okay. Mr. Tony, please.
I think I just heard that option one may incur more costs than option two. Did I mishear that? No. What did I hear?
It's SB 42.
Option one is narrower than option two, so I wouldn't expect that either of them would impose significant costs based on the fluctuation of our caseloads. But if anything, option one is narrower, would impose, the potential for increase in complaints would be less under option one than under option two.
Thank you for the clarification, Mr. Buena Ventura.
Mr. Chair, you had mentioned that you wanted to sort of find a balance or a middle ground in your assessment. I'm, I'm curious what you think with respect to, do we get to that middle ground if we just chose option one?
It's not as close to the middle as option two. So it, it is, it is a little bit of movement, but, well, no, actually, no, let me say that. To the extent that option one is purely COPRAC's original recommendation, I don't think we get to the middle ground. Thank you.
So I would be supportive of sending both alternative one and alternative two to the Supreme Court for consideration. I would not support saying that we strongly support alternative one over alternative two. I think proposing a broader rule for the Supreme Court's consideration makes sense, especially given our stated commitment to accountability and reform. I'm hearing from folks who have spoken up today that we don't anticipate that this will significantly increase the burden on OCTC. And I think for all the reasons that Leah has stated and that you have explained, we need to stop being the only state that doesn't have some version of model rule 8.3 in, in effect. So I would support sending both.
Thank you, trustee Chen. Trustee Soell, your hand is up.
I think trustee Chen just clarified something for me. I was just, I was going to ask, I just wanted to make sure that I was, I had heard and I was clear. That California is one of the few, if, if not the only state that does not have a, a, a rule similar to 8.3. Is that?
I think that's correct. Some version of, of model rule 8.3, yes. And many states have just 8.3.
So I, to me, a couple of things, with that being clarified and that being said, that says to me that, while we've had a very, very robust debate about this, and lots of good points have been made, there is a track record of best practices out there amongst, you know, 40-plus, 45-plus other states for us to lean on relative to many of the, many of the issues that have been raised about vagueness, definitions, et cetera, et cetera. And so it just seems to me like there's, there's a lot of learning that, that we can incorporate and integrate into anything that we move forward, because other states have, have this in place and have done it. The second point I would, I would just make is that I, I do understand the, the quantitative aspects of the fact that George and others are saying that the costs are absorbable. And I understand that from a, from a quantitative standpoint. What I would say is that from a qualitative standpoint, there also are costs. And I feel like we have an obligation to act. And, and by not acting, if the backlog, if by, by, if we do, if, if we do act, and the backlog grows, there is a perception cost that's out there that, once again, that, you know, we have not, we have not been meeting our obligations, you know? And so I understand the quantitative, but I also just want to inject in that there's a qualitative issue here as well in terms of what the perception is. And the, the last point I would make is that understanding that there is a fiscal impact in being the chair of, or understanding that we can't necessarily qualify, quantify a fiscal impact, I still feel very strongly that we have an obligation to, to act here. Because our, our actions here will also create an opportunity for negotiation and, and debate with the legislature, and we'll put down a marker to the state board as it relates to this. And so I think that the, the legislature would probably like to see us, you know, go on the record as, as stating what our position is. And I think right now, I would be leaning towards moving, I prefer option, alternative two, but would probably be in favor of moving both onto the Supreme Court.
Thank you, Arnie. Anyone else? Okay, so you see the resolution on the screen? It is to approve alternatives one and two, send them both to the Supreme Court with a strong, with an indication that the board strongly supports alternative one. And then there are, no, that's it. Correct? Okay. There were some, some, I thought there were some other kind of non-substantive rules or changes, or am I confusing that with something else?
I don't think they needed to be voted on.
Okay.
She was just explaining the, the technical amendments that I believe OGC reviewed and weighed in on, that they didn't require recirculation.
Thank you for the clarification. All right, the motion's on the floor. If there are no questions, I'm going to call for the roll, please. Go ahead.
Broughton?
Excuse me, had to find my mute button. A very reluctant yes.
Thank you. Erica, would you mind taking down the screen? Should we put it back up?
I just, the second paragraph, we didn't look at. It, it still says that further resolve that the, something about requesting approval of the rule, which is confusing now that we're submitting two rules.
We, we tweaked it to say the alternatives of the rule, but let's show that. Propose new rule 8.3 alternatives to the Supreme Court.
But she says that the rule be, it says that the rule be approved.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Yeah. I think that should probably be a rule be approved, which, you know, is a little bit wishy-washy in my estimation.
One of the rules.
Thank you.
We're in the middle of a vote, so it's probably not appropriate for me to offer my, my opinion. You'll see it when I vote. Sorry about that.
Louisa, should I stop sharing again?
Unless trustees would like it up. No. Yes, please. Thank you. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Chen?
I, I'm not comfortable saying strongly supports alternative one. So for that I, I'm not comfortable saying strongly supports alternative one, so for that reason, I vote no.
Cisneros?
Aye.
Good?
Aye.
Noel?
All right, Trustee Good, for the same reasons, Trustee Chen, I vote no.
Shelby?
Nay.
Soell?
I'm a no, I'm a no. I don't, that last clause gets me.
Aye.
Tony?
Nay.
Duran?
Nay.
Six nays, one, five ayes.
The motion fails. Let's try again, shall we?
Where do you need?
You need, you need a majority, so.
Majority.
There are 11 of us here, we'll need six in favor of same proposal.
So then I would make a motion to, if we could put the resolution back up.
Who's speaking?
Stallings.
Can't hear you.
It's Brandon.
Ah, okay.
So I would make the same motion, but change the last portion of the first paragraph, so with an indication that the Board strongly supports alternative one, if we said supports instead of strongly supports.
If that's your motion, we'll see if it gets a second.
Second.
Thank you, Trustee Good. So we've essentially removed the word strongly, indicating to the court that the Board supports alternative one, but just not as much love. Let's go ahead and have the debate on this one, please. It shouldn't, it shouldn't take long. So this is where I will go ahead and enter the debate that I should have before, I apologize. I actually think that we should tell the court that we support alternative two. So send them both to the court, but we strongly support alternative two. That's not an alternative motion, I'm just telling you that if this motion comes to a vote, I will vote no.
Move the question?
Can we have the roll call, please?
Can we take out that last paragraph that says the Board supports alternative one? Can we just send it that we approve alternatives one and two, and then leave it at that?
So again, that would be another motion, and we can handle it.
That was a question, that wasn't a motion.
No, no, but certainly we could do that, Mark. But I think, and I'll look to Elaine to confirm this, I think that that is essentially a competing motion with the motion that Brandon's made.
We had a second, correct?
We do have a second, yes.
So the question is, is a motion to amend a prior motion?
Potentially. Mark, is that, do you?
Well, yeah, I'll make a motion to amend if Brandon will accept it.
He declined.
You dirty dog.
Do you want to just talk this through, so we don't go through several votes? Please.
So if, if there was a motion that didn't state a preference, would you be okay with that?
Me personally? I think I would. It's not my, my preferred motion would be to send them both to the court with a preference for alternative two.
Right.
But I would, I would be okay sending them both to the court with no stated preference.
With no preference.
Yep.
Okay.
I'd be okay with that.
Mr. Duran's words have changed my mind, so I'll support the amendment.
The friendly amendment.
Okay, the motion on the floor has been amended by the author. Does the seconder approve of that?
I couldn't hear it. Can you please speak up?
It's, it's what you said, Mark Broughton.
Oh, getting rid of the.
That's right. Getting rid of the preference and sending them both to the court with, with no preference.
Yeah, I don't approve it.
Oh, you're the seconder, okay. Is there, is there someone else who wants a second? Trustee Stallings revised the motion. Trustee would have been through to seconds that motion. Can we have the roll call, please?
Broughton?
Yes.
Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Chen?
Aye.
Cisneros?
Aye.
Good?
Reluctantly, aye.
Noel?
Aye.
Shelby?
Nay.
Soell? Trustee Soell?
I know you called me.
Oh, sorry.
He knew, just thinking.
I prefer alternative two, I'm a no.
Stallings?
Aye.
Tony?
Nay.
Duran?
Aye.
Okay, that's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight ayes, three nays, the motion passes.
Okay. Thank you all very much for your hard work on this and for answering all of our questions. And trustees, thank you for the respectful debate and good points, I think, brought up by all. All right, let's move to the next item for the Rad Committee. This is a request to circulate for public comment proposed amendments to the California Rules of Court, which are listed on the agenda, I won't state them out loud, and the rules of the State Bar, also listed on the agenda, related to the regulatory function of the State Bar. This item will be presented by Special Counsel Steve Moad. Good to see you, sir.
Thank you very much. It's been a while since I've been in front of you. It's my distinct pleasure to be here, including appearing in front of two of my co-commissioners on the Ad Hoc Commission, so welcome and thank you. I don't want to spend a lot of time on this unless, of course, you have questions. I do have one comment to make, and that is simply that I want to make sure that it is, that you all are aware that in addition to the rule changes, we are seeking a policy change, which is also in there. And it is related to the enforcement mechanism for the new attorney training. During the 2016 adoption by the Board of that training, there was, in the rules, a one-year deadline to complete the training. However, the agenda item talked about not moving somebody to involuntary and active based on their failure to complete the training until their next regular MCLE reporting period, which could be up to three years after their admission date. And we, I do not believe that that is a tenable position to take for somebody who has not followed through with their required new attorney training. And so we are seeking to change that so that it is, the plan would be, so that we would send them the non-compliance notice at one year where the fee is assessed, along with the 60-day essentially notice to cure, and then we would move them to involuntary and active if they have not completed the training within that, those 60 days. And of course, that's approximate, I can't guarantee it's going to be right on the one year, et cetera, but in the normal course of business for the bar. With that, I'm happy to answer any other questions. There are, these are a number of changes to Title II of the Rules of the State Bar, touching on very many things, including CTAP, the licensee record, and a number of other items.
Thank you, Mr. Moad. Any questions for Mr. Moad from the Board? Lot of work here, I can tell. Thank you for making actually brief, appreciate that. If there are no questions, may I see the resolution, please? So this is a public comment period for 60 days for each of these proposed rule changes. Is there a motion on the resolution, please?
I'd like to make a motion.
Was that Mr. Noel who made the motion in the second from Cisneros? Great. Thank you, may I have the roll?
Just Noel, that's Cisneros, okay, thank you. Broughton?
Yes.
Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Chen?
Aye.
Cisneros?
Aye.
Good?
Aye.
Noel?
Aye.
Shelby?
Aye.
Soell?
Aye.
Stallings?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Duran?
Aye.
11 ayes, zero nays, motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Thank you, Mr. Moad.
Thank you.
Item 60.3 is a request to circulate for public comment amendments to the rules governing the mandatory fee arbitration program. This item is being presented by Staff Attorney Isabel Lu, Lau, I'm sorry if I've said it wrong. Lu. I'm going to promote her to the virtual table, please. Good afternoon, welcome.
Thank you. So item 60-3 discusses proposed amendments to the rules that govern the mandatory fee arbitration program and requests Board of Trustees' approval to release the proposed amendments for a 45-day public comment period. So these proposed amendments represent the first comprehensive update of the MFA rule since 2013, and the amendments consist of four new rules addressing the appointment of new fee arbitrators, as well as revisions to existing rules. So the new rules govern the appointment of arbitrators, arbitrator qualifications, requirements of arbitrators, and the removal of arbitrators from the program. The revisions to existing rules, they represent our main goal of increasing the efficiency of the program's daily operations. So the program would request the Board to release these proposed amendments to the MFA rules for a public comment period of 45 days. I'd also be happy to answer any questions about the revisions or the programming general.
Thank you, Ms. Lu. Are there any questions? Mr. Tony?
Can you tell me what a fee arbitration is and what free arbitration awards are?
Sure. So the fee arbitration program provides a venue for the arbitration of attorney-client fee disputes. The program also assists clients in the enforcement of arbitration awards. So the outcome of a fee arbitration is a decision that decides whether the client still owes money to the attorney, whether the attorney owes a refund to the client, or if nothing further is owed by either party. So it is a public protection program, and so the State Bar assists clients only in recovering a refund owed to them, and it's free of charge.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Trustee Tony. Thank you, Ms. Lu. Any other questions? All right, can we have the resolution up on the screen, please? This is a 45-day public comment period as opposed to the 60 we just approved?
Still moved.
Trustee Stallings moved?
Second.
Second by Trustee Noel. May I have the roll?
Broughton?
Push his power button.
Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Chen?
Aye.
Cisneros?
Aye.
Good?
Aye.
Noel?
Aye.
Shelby?
Aye.
Soell?
Aye.
Stallings?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Duran?
Aye.
11 ayes, zero nays, motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Secretary.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to 60.4. This is a request to recirculate for public comment amendments based on the recommendations by the California Civility Task Force under Rule of Court 9.7, Rules of Professional Conduct 1.2, 8.4, and the new rule 8.4.2. This item is being presented by Ms. Doherty. Once again, welcome back.
Thank you, and I will be much briefer than I was on 8.3. All right, so quickly, as Trustee Duran said, these are based on recommendations from the California Civility Task Force. And hopefully you can see my screen. So there were four recommendations in total, three of which affect attorneys. I'm going to be talking about numbers two and three on your screen, which is an amendment to the California Rules of Court, Rule 9.7, the civility oath, and to revise the rules of professional conduct to address civility. So starting with the rule of court, currently, any licensee who has been admitted since approximately June 2014, and that approximately is intentional, I'll talk about that in a minute, has been required to take the attorney oath with civility language. That's the last sentence in bold on your screen. As an officer of the court, I will strive to conduct myself at all times with dignity, courtesy, and integrity. What was proposed as issued for public comment was that any licensee who had not already completed the civility oath, as well as specially admitted attorneys, those are non-licenses but who are authorized to practice in California, would be required to submit a one-time declaration with a civility pledge, and then an annual requirement for all licensees and specially admitted attorneys to take the civility pledge when paying licensee fees or registering for that special admission status on an annual basis. We received 60 public comments on these, most of which were in favor of the recommendations. And the themes of those public comments, the proponents thought it would not positively impact civility, it would burden some on attorneys, and that the State Bar should focus on attorney discipline as opposed to a civility oath change. The proponents said that it would positively impact civility, it will reduce the need for judges to intervene to correct poor attorney behavior, just so you know, this comment was predominantly made by judges, and that all attorneys practicing in California should be required to equally commit to civility. So some brief changes regarding, following the initial public comment period, which necessitated going back out for a second round of public comment. So there's no bright line date at which it's clear that attorneys either did or did not take the oath with a civility language, and that's because an attorney who receives the, someone who has passed the bar who receives the oath to submit it, to take it and then submit it to the State Bar, has five years to do so. So that means that there are attorneys who were admitted in, at a, admitted, sorry, I'm losing my words here, but who were admitted and never took the civility oath at a date past which we would have thought they would have. So because there's no bright line date, and also to facilitate IT implementation of the declaration requirement, we are proposing an amendment to require all licensees, not just those who have not already taken the civility oath, to complete that one-time declaration with a civility language. The annual requirement would stay the same, so when paying your licensee fees or other registration for a special admissions attorney, you would complete that civility pledge. And then we're also requesting a 30-day public comment period for an implementing State Bar rule that would be required to actually impose the requirements of any approved amendments to Rule 9.7. I can pause there, or I can just keep going into the rules of professional conduct.
I don't see any questions, so please continue.
Great. All right, so regarding the proposed rules of professional conduct, we received 65 public comments in a 90-day public comment period. The majority, 66%, agreed with the proposed amendments, 8% agreed if modified, and 26% disagreed. As far as the themes, proponents thought the rules were needed because incivility negatively affects access to justice, and it's appropriate for there to be discipline for uncivil behavior. Opponents thought that the rules were too broad, they were vague or subjective and might have a chilling effect, and that the rules would be weaponized. So there are some minor proposed amendments to Comment 1 of Rule 1.2, and that's just to, excuse me, sorry, my slide went ahead of me, that's just to change the, to clarify that a lawyer can agree to reasonable requests of opposing counsel, but also to reasonable requests of self-represented parties. There were some minor amendments to Rule 8.4, Comment 4, and that is to provide a cross-reference to the standalone rule, Rule 8.4.2, and then also to clarify that a violation of Rule 8.4D is a separate basis for discipline for similar behavior as Rule 8.4.2. Some minor amendments to 8.4, Comment 6, it's to narrow it, to indicate that a violation includes significantly improper professional conduct that is abusive or harassing only within the practice of law. So we're removing the or related professional activities based on feedback from public commenters, and some concerns expressed regarding, you know, First Amendment restraints on conduct and speech. Similarly, there's examples in the comment about what does not violate the rule, and it's clarifying that these are just examples, and it's this conduct on its own if it was coupled with other conduct that could be violative of the rule. And then finally, to clarify that a lawyer should look to other legal authorities such as the local rules and bar associations' codes of civility when looking for guidance on how to conduct themselves civilly. Rule 8.4.2, the change is similar to that of 8.4, Comment 6, it's just to narrow it, to limit, to make it disciplinable for there to be incivility only within the practice of law, not expanding it to related professional activities. And then the proposed amendments to the comments in 8.4.2 are similar or identical to those that were made to the comments in 1.2 and 8.4. point four. So, with that, we are requesting a thirty-day second public comment period for Rule nine point seven, and for Rules one point two, eight point four, and eight point four point two, as well as an initial thirty-day public comment period for the implementing rule for nine point seven, which is State Bar Rule two point three. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Doherty. Trustee Stallings?
Erica, thank you so much for your continued work on this. I know it's been a massive undertaking and kind of a baptism by fire in coming into the, into this office, so thank you for, for sticking with it. I would just note that I did have a discussion with Justice Curry, who was the Chair of the Civility Commission, and he was encouraged with the, with the progress of the rules. He did want to be here to make a comment, but he is on his way to attend his son's graduation on the, law school graduation on the East Coast, but wanted me to pass along his regrets and his thanks.
Thank you, Vice Chair Stallings. Any questions, comments? Trustee Chen, please.
I do have a question. What was that language or related professional activities intended to encompass? Like, why was it in the original proposed?
Sure. So, it was intended to encompass like uncivil behavior at a bar association function, I think is the best example of that, and other things. But again, their commenters were concerned that they got closer and closer to the line of prior restraints on conduct.
A holiday party, perhaps.
Not at the Board of Trustees' meeting.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, this is a request for thirty day. Trustee Tony, please.
Thank you. When this comes back to us for vote, I'm going to ask again about what the fiscal and personnel impact is. Making incivility a basis for discipline means that we expect there to be more complaints, probably by attorneys, is my guess, this, you know, you know, civility thing. Again, I'm concerned we cannot deal with the current backlog, and I will say that the, we can absorb it, is, it gets thin once we, you know, depending how many you stack onto it. I'm just letting you know that. The other thing is, I have not, on this issue, commented on it before. I've tried to be very, just very hands-off, but I'll just make a couple of comments. I'll get back to this. I'm very concerned about this concept at all, because the only reason I've been listening at all and tried to restrain my comments is because of the comments of Trustee Chen explaining how attorneys often, you know, particularly older white male attorneys will, will use incivility to intimidate some of the younger attorneys, attorneys of color, women attorneys, and, you know, that weighed heavily with me. That sounds like bullying to me, and I don't know if that is the same as civility. I, you know, this whole thing about being civilized versus, you know, the opposite is, you know, you know, barbarism, okay? And I got to tell you, as a community organizer, and because of my style, I have been accused of incivility for years and years by elected officials, conference organizers, CPUC administrative law judges, senior bar executives. I have been accused of incivility. And so, I guess I see this, I'm worried that this, you know, it's, it's like, the reaction is considered incivil, but the, the things leading up to being, you know, to being upset about something, or, you know, protesting. And so, the reason I'm bringing this up is because if you read the articles carefully about the expulsions in Tennessee of Justin Jones and Justin Pearson, the Speaker of the Tennessee House accuses them of incivility. That is why they were removed. For some reason, shutting off the mic and not letting them speak was not considered to be incivil, but then, then getting a bullhorn to protest and join the protesters was considered to be incivil. So, you know, I'll take a look at, and I'll work hard to have an open mind when this comes back, but I just want to put out there that those of us who in this world have had to protest, who have had to use the power of disruption as described in Francis Fox Piven's Poor People's Movement, okay? You know, you're being incivil, you're not, you're not playing by the rules, you're not going through the protocols, you're going outside. You know, it's just sometimes people without power have to resort to to going outside the four square corners in order to get heard, in order to have impact. So, I'm just letting you know that I'm having a hard time with this. I will support it going to further comment, because I think that's good, but I just wanted to serve notice that this is a tough one for me.
And I want to assure you, Trustee Tony, I've heard your desire to have us beef up and make more robust our fiscal impact sections, particularly with respect to several of the items on the agenda today and tomorrow, and so I've already noticed staff about that, and we will be sure to be responsive.
Thank you, Trustee Tony. Thank you, Mrs. Wilson. Any other commentary, questions? May I, I understand there are two resolutions connected with this proposed action, so if I could see the first, please. Can I get a movement on that first motion, please? That first resolution, rather?
Stallings, so moved.
Motion by Stallings?
Second.
Second by Shelby. May I have the roll call, please?
Broughton?
Yes.
Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Chen?
Aye.
Cisneros?
Aye.
Good?
Aye.
Noel?
Aye.
Shelby?
Aye.
Soel?
Aye.
Stallings?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Duran?
Aye.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, motion carries.
All right, we're making our way through a rad. The sec, I'm sorry, we have another resolution on this item. Thank you. So, that's just a further designation of the other rules to be let out for public comment. Can I get a motion on this, please?
Stallings, so moved.
Motion by Stallings?
Second.
I was looking at Shelby. Can we have the roll call, please?
Broughton?
Yes.
Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Chen?
Aye.
Cisneros?
Aye.
Good?
Aye.
Noel?
Aye.
Shelby?
Aye.
Soel?
Aye.
Stallings?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Duran?
Aye.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Item sixty dash five is a request to recirculate, again, for public comment, select amendments to the rules governing minimum continuing legal education, MCLE. This item is being presented by Program Manager Ira, I'm going to really mess up the name, Araya. My glasses. Raheem. Raheem, this is terrible, you guys, it's late, I'm so sorry.
I can help with that. It's Raheem Mitavare.
Thank you so much, I apologize. Welcome.
Thank you.
We're ready for a staff report.
You are in present, not in presentation mode, Araya. Yeah. One more over.
Sorry about that.
I believe my colleague Kathy is going first.
Is that, does that look great?
Yeah, that looks good, Kathy.
Okay, I apologize for that. So, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak to you today. This item was previously before the Board in November of 2022. At that time, we did ask the Board to authorize public comment on the proposed amendments to the rules that would add three topic requirements to the required courses that licensees must complete as part of their existing twenty-five credit hours per thirty-six compliance, month compliance period, excuse me. And the Board also authorized for public comment proposed changes to MCLE compliance and provider rules that would improve the administration of the MCLE program. So, today, we're going to talk to you, we're going to provide a very brief overview of the public comments on those issues, and we are requesting additional public comment on selected items. We will not be seeking any action at this time, but we want to give a high-level overview of the comments that we received. Additionally, when we will, when we be coming back, we will be making a non-substantive change to Rule two point seven two, C one. The changes to that will delete unintentional references to other sub-paragraphs that don't exist in the rules. So, just very quickly, we had, in terms of public comments, the majority of the commenters support these, supported the proposals, and we received approximately one hundred eighty-five public comments of those, and as you can see on the screen, it were specifically regarding competence, five on technology, twenty-one on civility, and a hundred and thirteen on mock trial. So, most of the commenters agreed with the topics, but those who disagreed or agreed if modified didn't want them to be required credit hours. So, what I, so what I wanted to talk, to really get into today, was the MCLE credit for mock trial and moot court activities. So, on this, out of the one hundred and eighty-five comments, a hundred and thirteen commented directly on this proposal, and of those hundred and thirteen, forty-four recommended that the mock trial include the middle school level. And then the California Lawyers Association recommended that the rule be expanded to cover negotiation competitions and mediation competitions, which are akin to mock trial and to moot court arguments, and they requested that we explicitly cover the activities at the graduate school level. So, we, the staff agrees with these proposals, and we have amended the rules to reflect those additions. And so now, what I'll do is I'll turn it over to Araya to discuss changes to the provider rules. Unless there's comment, I mean, unless there's questions, excuse me.
Thank you, Ms. Ungary. Any questions for Ms. Ungary? Okay, Araya, welcome back.
Thank you, and thank you, Kathy. Good afternoon, members of the Board. As with the proposed amendments to the MCLE rules applicable to attorneys, proposed amendments to the MCLE provider rules were also circulated during the same ninety-day public comment period, and out of the one hundred and eighty-five comments received, twenty-five specifically addressed proposed changes to the provider rules. And of those twenty-five, there were seventeen responders who disagreed with the proposed changes, and eight who agreed if they were modified. The general consensus among the commenters were that several of the proposed amendments would be impractical, difficult to enforce and impose unnecessary administrative and financial burdens on providers, particularly nonprofit providers. And to address these concerns, staff has withdrawn several proposed amendments to the rules and proposed revised modification changes to the other rules as, if you go to the next slide, Kathy. So, these are the ones that we are proposing to be withdrawn, as these rules, and it was included in agenda item, as well as, as you can see on this presentation. And the next slide shows the rules that we are recommending a revised proposed amendments to. And I'd be happy to, to just keep it brief, I'm not going to go into detail, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that the members of the Board may have.
Thank you. Any questions? See, non, may I see the resolutions, please? Again, this is recirculation for public comment, and I'm trying, for thirty days for both sets. Can I have a motion, please?
Mrs. Stallings, so moved.
Moved by Stallings?
Second.
Second by Shelby. May I have the roll call, please?
Broughton?
Aye.
Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Chen?
Yes.
Cisneros?
Aye.
Good?
Aye.
Noel?
Aye.
Shelby?
Aye.
Soel?
Aye.
Stallings?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Duran?
Aye.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Item sixty dash six is a discussion regarding the Office of Chief Trial Counsel's performance metrics. This item is being presented by the Chief Trial Counsel, Mr. Cardona. This is a presentation, presentation only, there will be no recommendation or proposed action. Welcome back. Before you start, Mr. Cardona, I'm just going to do a check-in on the time. It's four oh five. We, we have, we have presenter for our closed session item that needs to be started no later than four forty-five. I don't think we're going to take forty-five minutes on, on your metric, sir, but just to give the trustees a sense of where we'll be heading in about forty minutes. Thank you.
All right, so this is basically our regular quarterly presentation on our metrics. There's a link in the presentation that links to the interactive dashboard that you can go in and look at these. The current dashboard for this quarter, this is an ongoing process developing the dashboard, so there have been some modifications and updates to the metrics that are being presented this time. That's an ongoing process, as we try to identify which metrics make the most sense and how to present them, so there may be subsequent changes in the future. This is basically the first page. These are the kind of key performance indicators that we look at. As you'll see, there are numbers that are in the red here, so those are all somewhat related. You'll note that our caseload clearance rate, both this quarter and last quarter, was below our target of one hundred percent, which means that we have not been closing cases as quickly as they have been coming in. When we don't close cases as quickly as they come in, that leads to an increase in our case inventory, which you see here, and the increase in our case inventory typically then relates to the time that cases take to close. In other words, as our inventory increases and our fixed staff is handling more cases per staff member, we tend to see increases in the time that those cases take, and so there's an interconnection amongst these various metrics. We can, we'll talk a little bit more about the caseload clearance rate on a later slide because we have another metric that's related to that, but that's those metrics. The quality metrics that we look at are the last two on this page, the reopenings by the Complaint Review Unit for reasons other than a complaint at presenting new evidence. We try to keep those below our target of two percent. We did that this quarter. And the random audit reopens, which are reopened by the random auditor who looks at our closed cases, that was kept for the most recent audit at four point two percent, which is below our target of four point three percent. So, in terms of, the next slide is basically our new dashboard for backlog, which shows the backlog in two different ways, and one of the additions that was added here is a glossary, so a later slide is going to be the glossary. Here, we're looking at the backlog in two ways. On the left, there's a projection based on numbers for the current quarter as to how many cases will close in backlog status in 2023. That is, this is a projection as of the end of 2023, as to how many cases that closed during 2023 would have closed outside the backlog measures, which are one hundred and eighty degrees for non-complex cases and three hundred and sixty-five, three hundred and sixty-five days for complex cases. As you can see, the percentage of cases, fourteen percent, is akin to what we had in 2021. It's slightly higher than in 2022, at least a projection. So this will vary as we move through each of the quarters, but this is the current projection for the year. The next one on the right is more concerning. This is the open cases in backlog as of the end of Q1 2023. So this shows as of the last day of the first quarter of 2023, how many cases in our current inventory were already exceeding 180 days for non-complex cases and 365 days for complex cases. As you can see, there's been an increase of that over comparative number, and you can see the trend below. The trend is also disturbing in that the trend has been going up in terms of the number of open cases. So this is what we are going to be working on over the next quarter, is trying to get this down and try to understand why this is. It probably relates to a certain extent to our next page, which is the metrics for caseload clearance rate. As you can see, our caseload clearance rate over the last several quarters has been below our target of 100%. This is likely what's driving the increase in our inventory and also driving, to a certain extent, the increase in the open case, in the pending cases that are in backlog. You can see some trends. If you look at the case clearance rate trend, the incoming case trend, and the general inventory by case age trend or total inventory trend, you'll see that those all follow somewhat similar curves suggesting some correlations. We looked at this in more detail, tried to sort out whether it was correct that the caseload clearance rate was tied, correlated strictly with increases in the number of incoming cases. Looked at some data that's shown on the next page where we actually broke it down by quarter to try and see what the correlation was. So in general, if you look at this, what it does show is that there is a correlate, a general correlation between the number of cases that we have coming in, that is, the open cases. As that increases, we do tend to see an increase, but it is not always the case. In other words, there are some instances, some quarters where that's not the case. So for example, if you look at 2021 Q4, the ADR open, 3420 was below what we looked at as kind of our measure, less than 3,600 cases open. But nevertheless, in that quarter, we had a case clearance rate of only 96.9% below our target. Whereas in other instances, so for example, in Q3 2019, we saw more than 44,000 cases coming in, 4426, but we still had a caseload clearance rate of 112.95%. So the correlation is not one-to-one. There's a general correlation. So what we are doing now is trying to look at this in more detail and trying to sort out what drives this and how we can get the caseload clearance rate up, which in turn would have the benefit of decreasing our inventory and hopefully drive the backlog down. So that's what we're looking at, and in particular, we're trying to take a deep dive into some sample investigator caseloads to get a better sense of what's driving delays in cases as we look at kind of an average investigator's caseload. So that's an ongoing project that we're engaged in. The next slide shows, my apologies, next slide shows basically by different stages of cases. So for the three stages, and this ties to the SB 211 proposal, they proposed for new case processing. We've used the same stages, intake, investigation, and charging. Shows the numbers of cases passing through those phases over time and the duration that cases take over time. So you'll see again from this that we've consistently had, we close a fair number of cases in intake, and we also close those fairly quickly. When we get to investigation, there we have a lesser number of cases. In other words, it's kind of like a funnel, the most cases an intake, then it gets decreased in investigation and then decreased more in charging. And, but the times taken for those cases increase. You can see an investigation in particular, the general trend, reading from left to right, has seen an increase in investigation time. This is most likely what is driving the increase in both the inventory and the backlog. The charging numbers, you'll see that those are fairly long times, but the number of cases in charging is relatively small. So those are likely not the number of cases that are driving those general overall trends.
George, before you move on from that slide, the, the big, big drop in Q4 for 2022 on investigation, does that mean those were, there weren't investigations open, those, that the things weren't being investigated? What, what, that's a pretty big drop there?
That would show, I believe, hang on, let me just pull up the glossary to make sure. But I believe that, that doesn't mean that there weren't cases moving into investigation. This is looking at cases that have moved through the phase, so that have moved on, have either been closed or moved on to the next phase, is my understanding.
Okay.
So that does, I mean, ideally, we wouldn't see that drop because cases would continue to move through, so we'd hope to see that those numbers stay basically the same or that there's more of a smooth curve without that kind of big drop there. That's something we need to look at is why that was. What happened there that led that number to go down? And I don't have an answer for you right now.
Okay, thanks.
The next metric is a new one. This is tied to our, trying to look at respondents who have large numbers of complaints. So what this shows on the top is in 2023 Q1, how many respondents who had new cases opened in that quarter had a history of having 15 or more complaints over the last five years or 40 or more complaints over the last five years. As you can see, that number is relatively small. It's roughly 1%, a little less than 1%. The bottom metric on the left shows all respondents with open complaints. So this would be any respondent who had an open complaint in Q1 2023. How many of those respondents had 15 or more or 40 or more prior complaints? And again, you can see that it's a fairly small number. This is kind of the pattern we'd expect to see. In other words, there's far fewer 40-plus than there are 15-plus. But this gives us a sense of how many of those kind of large number of complaint repeaters we have in our population of respondents who we're looking at. So this is a new metric to address that.
And George, sorry to interrupt you again, but can you remind me, is there a corresponding priority that, that either of those categories takes now?
Yes, so I'll discuss this in another, another presentation. But yes, we've implemented a new flag in our case management system to flag respondents who fit one of these categories, who have 15 or more prior complaints, which would automatically encompass the 40-plus. And those are given priority in terms of review, extra scrutiny, and decision-making as we move to investigation and/or as we move on. So that's a new, new implementation that we've just put in within the last month.
Thank you.
But that's tied to this and to our overall project of looking at this type of respondent, which I'll report on in more detail because it involves getting into individual investigation information that's going to be in closed session.
Okay, great.
So the next slide is basically our quality measures. Again, looking at the trends of our quality measures, the Complaint Review Unit reopens, the Random Audit reopens, and the third metric, which is the percent of Walker petitions denied, which is the final stage of review that complainants can seek. If they are unsatisfied with the Complaint Review Unit's decision, they can file a petition in the Supreme Court and seek review. And as you can see, our target there is to have none of those granted. We had one granted in Q2 2022, but other than that, have maintained that target. So the next slide is basically the results of the complaining witness survey. When we close complaints, we request for the complainant to fill out a survey that indicates their satisfaction with the process on kind of two axes. One, do they, do they believe that they were given sufficient access to the process? And two, how fair do they believe the process was? So you can see here, the trends largely staying stable. It's on a five points, four being somewhat agree, five being strongly agree, three being neither agree nor disagree as to whether they believe they had sufficient access or whether this, whether the treatment of their complaint was fair. As you can see, for access, we're staying somewhere at the high end between three and four. For fairness, unfortunately, we're down at probably the, somewhere between two and three. This is something we're continuing to try and work on. I will note, however, as I've noted before, that A, the response to the survey is voluntary, and so people self-select to respond to the survey. And B, we often see complainants who we close complaints on believing that we have not closed them appropriately, which I think affects the fairness score. But this is something that we will continue to work on as we continue to try and improve kind of our customer service metric.
If I could actually offer a comment on that point, George. The, if you look at the, the differential between the intake bar and the investigation or charging bar, even though it only gets to a three, it's, it moves up in, in, in each quarter, which to me says, once we have investigators engaged, complainants feel a little bit better.
Yes. In other words, complainants feel least fair when their complaint is closed with, and they're told that it's not even going to move to investigation. They feel happier when it has moved to investigation, but still unhappy that we have closed it after investigation. So that is kind of what we would expect. Ideally, we would want to see, you know, at least moving up to try and get everything in there up to a three, even taking into account the fact that people generally would tend to be dissatisfied with the outcome. So that's kind of where we are there. The next slide is employee turnover.
George, this is Arnie, just real quick, can you find access for me real quick, please?
Access is, do they believe they had sufficient information and knowledge to enable them to participate in the complaint function? In other words, did they have the necessary information? Were they provided with information to enable them to take advantage of the opportunity to file a complaint? Whereas fairness deals more on the other side with, having gotten their complaint into the system, do they believe that they were fairly, that that complaint was fairly handled? Does that, does that answer that?
Yes, please. Thank you.
So the next slide is basically a measure of employee engagement and turnover rates. As you can see, we had, we had a spike in this in 2022, particularly among our investigators. That spike appears to have been resolved. And we're now, OCTC is basically now more tracking the turnover within the rest of the state bar, which is what this is intended to track. The final slide is looking at disciplinary filings to get a sense of actual instances in which we have proceeded to either file disciplinary charges, file a stipulation with the other party to facts and discipline, and/or transmitted a criminal conviction. So these would be cases that would be put into the system to proceed to discipline. This is on a per filing basis, so it shows the number of filings, not the numbers of attorneys. For the next quarter, we will be working on getting another metric that actually shows this with respect to individualized attorneys. So we can get a sense of how many attorneys we have proceeded to seek discipline against in addition to how many filings we have done. So that, I believe, is my last slide, other than the glossary, which I would encourage everybody to take a look at, which is a new addition. I'm going to attempt to make sure that we are all using the same terms when we talk about these metrics. And it's, it can actually be very useful if you're looking at the dashboard on your own. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for the Chief Trial Counsel? Okay, seeing none, thank you for the update, elucidating as always.
Oh, I had one question, sorry.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that, I didn't see your hand. Trusty good.
That's okay. Mr. Cardona, I was just wondering, maybe it was on one of these slides, I apologize if it was. Were the number of FTEs in the OCTC sort of consistent from this time period to the prior time period? Might that explain some of the differences?
The number of what? I missed something?
Oh, FTEs, yeah.
Yeah. So the number of FTEs has been fairly consistent. We noted previously that at the, from the end of 2021 to 2022, and this relates to the staff turnover slide. In other words, when we have a high level of turnover, we tend to replace more senior investigators in particular with less senior investigators. Our more senior investigators obviously are more efficient at handling a larger caseload. And so that's one reason that that employee turnover slide is in there. In other words, as we lose more senior investigators and have to replace them with more junior investigators, the efficiency of our handling of investigations tends to go down. And so we expect to see in, in those instances, we think that's one of the things that explains kind of an increase in the time taken, the average time taken for investigations. That's one of the drivers of that, the experience level of our investigators.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trusty Good. Thank you, Mr. Cardona. Any other questions? Okay, don't see any hands. Time check, it is 4:25. Item 60-7 is a report on the implementation of random audit recommendations. Welcome back, Mr. Cardona.
Thank you. So this is part of our new procedure. We provided reports to the Board on the last two random audits that were done. Those both are catch-up audits that were covering past periods. So one covered the period for files closed between September 1st, 2020, and February 28th, 2021. The second covered the next six-month period from March 1st, 2021 through August 31st, 2021. We reported on the results of those audits at prior board meetings. This is now a follow-up pursuant to the new procedure that we will report to the Board on a regular, regular periods to update the Board on progress in complying with the recommendations. So in this instance, the report takes two forms. First, this is a follow-up on the cases that were reopened pursuant to the random audit. Basically, the first random audit to which I referred recommended reopening nine files. We have continued to review those. Of those nine, after further follow-up and investigation, five have been reclosed. Four of them remain open pending further investigation. For the second audit, there was a recommendation to reopen eight files. We have followed up on those. Four of those have now been reclosed as a result of follow-up and further investigation on the issues that the random auditor identified. Four of those remain open and pending further investigation. In terms of training, both audits recommended training on a variety of issues. In the agenda item, I set out the training that we've done over the time period on the various of those issues that were recommended. In the agenda item, we advised you that we would be conducting additional training in May on certain of these. In fact, that training was conducted on May 17th, which I guess was yesterday. We did a training session for attorneys, investigators, and paralegals that covered when to charge violations of Section 6068i, which is refusal to cooperate with an OCTC investigation. There was also follow-up training on the handling of reciprocal disciplinary matters involving differing rules from other states. And that training also covered communication with complainants and respondents. In addition, we provided training to the Special Disciplinary Trial Counsel on file maintenance and reporting in Odyssey to assist the Special Disciplinary Trial Counsel, who are now using Odyssey for case reporting. So that training too has been done.
And, and George, the trainings are mandatory, not optional, correct?
Yes, for the attorneys, investigators, and paralegals, it was mandatory. For the SDTC, it was mandatory for those who the SDTC administrator identified as needing the training. So that's basically a report on where we are in terms of the recommendations. This, again, will be a kind of regular report back to the Board.
Thank you. Any questions for George on that, that audit stuff? So it looks like on the limited number of audits, it was roundabout half or a little bit less than half that were closed and still, and the other half still remain open?
Still remain open. We just don't know what the results of the follow-up investigation on those others will be, but we'll come back to you at a later point in time and, and complete the report.
Is it still relatively soon? Is that just the issue, do you think?
Since the audit reports came in, yes. I mean, the cases are older because the audits were delayed. Eventually, we hope to be caught up, and we're trying to get caught up so that we should now be back, in the very near future, we should be back on the regular six months where we get the audit sooner after the six-month period of closed cases so that it's more recent cases that we're talking about.
Great, thank you. Okay, you get to stay in the chair for 60.8, although Leah would like to say something.
Yes, and just let, let me know what you think about this, George. But because 60-8 is intended to be a discussion, and given the hour and where we are, and the fact that you've got and the fact that you've got it come tomorrow anyway, or at least be present tomorrow for the closed session portion, I'm wondering what the board thinks about holding sixty-eight likely till tomorrow. The next two items on the RAT agenda, one is a really feel-good item. The update on CTAP that I'd love to have for us, uplifting. And the ethics opinion is extremely quick. So I think we could get through both of those by 4:45. But George, I didn't discuss this with you first, so.
Oh, no, I'm fine. I'll be here tomorrow. It's not a problem for me.
All right, we know where George works, and we get to meet Ms. Stavli, and, and hear some, hear some, some good stuff. So let's please just do that. Item sixty-nine is a first look at the data for the Client Trust Account Protection Program. Long awaited indeed. Presented by Mr. Moad and Principal Program Analyst Jennifer Stavli. Stalvi, Stalvi.
Yes, Stalvi.
Thank you, sorry about that. It is really late. Welcome.
Thank you. It's very nice to be here.
So as the chair mentioned, this is Jennifer Stalvi. She is the Principal Program Analyst in the Division of Regulation. She's been taking the lead on some of the CTAP developments and has been doing a great job. So I'm glad to have her here with me today. First of all, moving on to the next slide, a little bit of background about CTAP. First of all, CTAP, or the Client Trust Account Protection Program, was, really grew out of recommendations of the Committee on Special Discipline Case Audit. And I want to thank trustee Sisneros and other members of that committee for their diligence and insight in really planting the seeds for this program, which I think will be invaluable to the state bar. The program, excuse me, the report from that committee was issued on November 19th, 2021. And I believe, you know, maybe a little bit of bias here, but I, I think that in somewhat of a remarkable speed, we were able to put procedures in place, adopt rules, and overcome some technological challenges. And so in December of 2021, of 2022, excuse me, with the beginning of the 2023 renewal cycle, we began collecting data for CTAP. And so I think that's, that's impressive. So Phase One of CTAP really focuses on reporting and registration of trust accounts. And licensees are required to report annually to the state bar if they are responsible for management of client trust accounts or client funds. And if so, the attorney has to register either with their law firm, through their law firm in agency billing, or themselves through my state bar profile. They have to register that client trust account with us. And there are, are really two types of trust accounts. There's the, an IOTA account, I'll talk about in a second, and a non-IOTA trust account. And attorneys have had an obligation to report IOTA information at least once, as Jennifer will talk about more, for a long time. But this is the first time that they've had an obligation to report non-IOTA accounts. So what's the difference? Well, the, the first is that a non-IOTA account is really an individual, generally, an individual client trust account, where funds from that client or for that client are placed into that account. If there is enough money that's held for a long enough time where it can earn interest, that interest is added to that account by the bank, and it earns to the benefit of the client or third party for whom the attorney is holding it. The other type is an IOTA account, which is also known as an interest on lawyer's trust account. And those, on the other hand, are pooled accounts, where generally money from multiple clients or third parties are held. And those also earn interest. But because they are pooled and multiple clients' money is held in there, often the interest is hard to apportion. And so instead of going to the account for the benefit of the clients, that money is swept to the state bar to support over 100 legal aid organizations in, in the state of California. So it's a very important program. So those attorneys that report that they are responsible for client funds and have to complete that also have to complete a self-assessment. And the objective of the self-assessment is to promote awareness of the rules regarding trust accounting and the prohibitions also associated with those trust accounts and their procedures. It's also to encourage the attorney to examine their own trust accounting practices and to get those attorneys to really not just examine them, but determine if they need to make changes to those practices. So moving on to the next slide. What you see here is that we had more than 202,000 attorneys who were required to complete CTAP reporting this year. And that includes both active attorneys and inactive attorneys who were active at any point during 2022. And as of today, approximately 193,000 attorneys are in compliance and have completed their reporting, which is huge. And we are doing substantial outreach to get as many of the remaining attorneys into compliance before the June 30th deadline. We are also doing substantial outreach to, to attorneys who are technically, quote, in compliance, but when they were reporting their CTAP compliance, they indicated that a firm would register an account on their behalf, but the firm hasn't yet done so. Or, so we're also doing a bunch of outreach to those. Those are deemed to be in compliance at this point, but there really is something else that needs to be done in order to have their reporting be complete. Moving on to the next slide. So out of those 193,000 attorneys reporting so far, what have we found? Well, the slide says 82,000 attorneys have reported at least one IOTA or CTA account. It's really not correct. There's 75,000 attorneys who have reported one or more of those accounts. The, what happened here is that the 6,932 got added. They're essentially double counting because that's at least one of each. And so that's how that error occurred. Also, please be aware that, that we have about 961 accounts where the attorney reported having both an IOTA and a CTA. And that, those are included here mostly because we don't know yet which one they really are. They, they reported the same account as an IOTA and a CTA. And so we've got to do some additional digging with them to figure out, okay, which one is it really? So also, of those 75,000 attorneys reporting an account, the overwhelming majority were in active status. And that makes sense because there are some valid reasons why an attorney who's either no longer active, or is a judge, or whatever, may have an account, at least for a short period of time. You know, they are generally held by active attorneys, which is a good sign. Moving on to the next slide. So this is just a quick snapshot of the practice areas for approximately half, 52%, I believe, of the attorneys who reported having a client trust account. Over half of them are in one of these six sectors with fully 24%, 25%ish being in civil litigation and/or business sectors. So that's just a little bit of background on where we are now. And I'll turn it over to Jennifer for a little bit more on trends.
Great, yes. You know, as Steve was saying, we got this data starting in December 1st. And then we're continuing to have attorneys filing for CTAP. So it was great to be able to, as of the April 3rd deadline, to have our IT function start to look at the data, what was reported and what did we find? So if we move to the next slide. So the question, one of the biggest questions we have was how much money is held on deposit in California banks on behalf of attorney-client trust accounts? And so what we found was that the number of IOTAs that have an average daily balance of over $1 million actually almost doubled from 2021 to 2022. So there are about 2,500 IOTA accounts in California that have, on average, daily balance of over $1 million. What we also looked at was of IOTA accounts only, not the individual trust, or the non-IOTAs. But of individual, of the IOTA accounts, the total amount of funds held in those accounts in 2021 was, on average, $12.3 billion. And that increased about 27% to $15.6 billion in 2022. What I would add, that I think is also significant, is that the amount of money held at year-end 2022, December 31st, one given day, total amount of funds was $20.4 billion. And this is just in the IOTAs. And this is data that's reported by the bank, so it's reliable. It's much more comprehensive than what was reported by the attorneys. It's a lot of money. This, this slide is really.
Jennifer, I know you guys don't have it in the deck, but can you please just give the number for the CTA, the individual CTAs?
Yes, I'll give it, and, and it's coming up too, but it's, what was reported? So we have the two sets of accounts. The IOTA data, we looked at what the banks report to us because they report all of the IOTA information, it's very reliable, that's the 20.4. For the non-IOTA accounts, we have no data from the banks. So we only can rely on what attorneys self-report. And what they've already self-reported is an additional $10 billion. And we know that that reporting is nowhere near an accurate full picture of what actually is happening in the, in the banks. So this, if we go back, this account, or this slide, rather. The accountant is always thinking of accounts. What, what we were looking at, or what we were attempting to do was a reconciliation of IOTA accounts. So we have data that the banks report to us, we have data that the attorneys report, and we wanted to compare the two. So I'll skip down. We have over 50,000 IOTA accounts in California. Going down to the bottom of this chart, the good news is that almost 33,000 of those was reported both by banks and attorneys. We were able to match them, they're reconciled, everybody is doing what they're supposed to do. The bad news is that on the, the, the number just above it is almost 20,000 accounts are reported by the banks and are not being reported by attorneys. It's a lot. And what's really challenging for us is that we have no way to identify who those belong to. So the, with the way that the banks currently report to us is a very small piece of the account name, which often just says California IOTA. It's just the top line. So if it's not a very specific name, we would have no way to research and find out who that is. So this year, what we're doing is we're actually going to take those 20,000. Hopefully, that goes down after the firms report a bit more. And then we're actually going to prepare spreadsheets for each of the banks and request from them, please tell us who these accounts belong to so that we can then go to the attorneys and say, hey, you need to, need to comply with CTAP. The top number is, this is the, the accounts that were reported by attorneys, but not by banks. And what we found in doing this analysis for last year was that this data was generally unreliable. The attorneys either got the account number wrong, they gave us their business operating account, it wasn't an IOTA. We were very reassured to find not one single instance where an attorney reported an IOTA that wasn't reported by the banks. So the banks are doing a great job. It's the attorneys we need to work on educating, you know, what kind of account you have, making sure you know where to find your account number so that you, you provide it to us correctly. And so we can go to the next slide. This is the individual or the non-IOTA accounts. Over 10,000 of them were reported to us. Again, the banks provide no information, so we have no way to understand what wasn't reported to us properly.
Just interrupt there and say, as part of the large priorities that the board adopted earlier this year, we do have an affirmative proposal to require bank reporting on these CTAs as well as the IOTA accounts.
Yes, that's correct. If we go to the next slide. Okay, so just, you know, we were wondering, well, what impact has CTAP had on the amount of reporting attorneys have, have done? It's hard to say because, like Steve mentioned, attorneys were first reporting IOTAs in 1982. I actually spoke to an attorney who reported it first in 1985. He's never reported it since. It was closed 10 years ago. He had no idea he was supposed to update us. So we didn't have reliable data before this year. But what we do know is for the entire 40-year period, there was a total of 40,200 accounts that were reconciled over that entire span. Whereas this year alone, we have the 33,000 accounts that have been matched. So we feel really confident that accounts are being reported for the first time. And just a couple more points, takeaways. We realize that there are a number of accounts, hundreds of IOTAs, that are held by disbarred, resigned, or inactive attorneys, judges, and those who have never been licensed in California. As Steve mentioned, there might be very good reasons for this, but we want to understand them. We know from other jurisdictions that there's that risk of non-attorneys actually being able to open an IOTA account. Banks don't, some banks do not check whether a person's licensed or not. So we have more work to do there. And the banks would not know if a license status has changed. And so we're working with them on that as well.
So you, you could see me getting ready to ask a question. So that means for those hundreds of people, they essentially still control those funds and the bank, nor we can do anything to stop them if they were to choose to withdraw them all.
Correct, yeah. And this is one, the, the risk here, you know, if, the risk of someone who's not an attorney being able to open an IOTA account is that they're privileged accounts. So there are, and we're still having to follow up with federal authorities on this, but there is a likelihood that banks don't follow the same reporting requirements for, say, cash transactions. So if you, in a normal business account, if you deposit over 10,000 in cash, that's reported automatically to FinCEN, the federal regulator. For IOTAs, that not, doesn't necessarily happen. So we have to make, because that would look like the attorney would have to tell the bank which client that is related to. And I, you know, whether or not this happens, we're still trying to figure that out. But that's, that's the risk.
Trustee Tony, please.
May I request that this topic be held over to the July meeting? Because I have questions on it that I'd like to wait for.
Certainly, I don't see a problem with that. And certainly, there'll be more information for us to have and perhaps more questions.
Yes.
This all signals to me that we need to be engaging in more conversations with the legislature and, and the banking industry writ large, if we can do that. Okay, I'm sorry, we, we cut you short. Keep going.
Oh, not at all. I guess I actually have a quick here, so.
And we are talking to the banks.
Yes, so that, that's one of the things that I was going to get to is that one of the limitations is the lack of information that we get from the banks. We have been working with California Bankers Association and the legislature to see if we can get the banks to report the name and California bar license number of the signatory, the responsible attorney for those accounts, so we can then match those up. We've also been working on trying to get this, as Jennifer mentioned, the same data that we get on IOTA on the non-IOTA accounts because that would help us also make sure that we are getting attorneys to comply with the, with the rules. We are also working towards implementing Phase Two of the, of CTAP, which includes compliance reviews and investigative audits. Jennifer's been working diligently on developing what those compliance reviews will look, and audits will look like. We've been working with MAD to determine the appropriate number of attorneys to audit and the selection process for those audits. And I'm sure that I will be back here talking to you about that in depth at another time, maybe in July. In the meantime, the first step that we hope to begin is volunteer audits. And of course, full implementation of Phase Two has always been dependent on identifying viable funding sources. So that, that's going to be a huge step for the next part. And on the, the last one, this is important, and this is the training. This is, Jennifer's been working also on this. She's developing a new hands-on, practical CTA course on record-keeping, including reconciliation, that we hope to roll out soon. This is not going to be the same Client Trust Account Program training that OCTC does, which focuses more on the rules. This is really a practical guide to how to do a reconciliation of an account. And here's a preview of part of the, the forms that Jennifer's been working to develop for that training. And it is a PDF form that people can download and, and, or print and fill out by hand. They can fill it out as a PDF. It's also an Excel version that they can use if they choose to do that. And there's account journals and, and client ledgers as well. We're also going to be working with, with OPC, the Office of Professional Competence, to rework the Handbook on Client Trust Accounting to make it more easily digestible. And in 2024, we will likely be, be back talking. And in 2024, we will likely be, be back talking to you about adding client trust accounting management to either the new attorney training or as a requirement to opening a client trust account before somebody can do that or within X months of doing that, they need to, to show that they've gone through that course. The last thing that I will say, and I know I'm past my time, I apologize. But as the Committee on Special Discipline Case Audit discussed in their final report, there are really three distinct purposes for CTAP. The first is education, the second is deterrence, and the third is detection. And what I can tell you is that without better bank information and without funding in order to implement the audits and compliance reviews, we can do the education, and it will be great, and it will hopefully make a difference. We can kind of do the, the deterrence. We really can't do the detection. That's really the next level that we really need to get to, hopefully in the near future.
Thank you, Mr. Mo, and I see trustee Noel has a question or a comment.
Just had a, a real quick comment. I was told the other day that the large increase in the funding in terms of IOTA has been due to, of course, the interest rates that keep going up and up, but also the state bars program of having folks being leaders in the IOTA area, or leading sponsors or whatever it's called. In addition to that, is the, that there are many banks, we were told, that give a higher amount, that they don't have to give. But they do it because of the, the IOTA accounts. And I, and I just think that the legislator, legislator, I don't know more about that.
I, I don't know if it's a result of the increased interest rates, because that interest doesn't actually ever hit the IOTA account. It gets swept directly to the state bar. But I do believe that there are a number of banks that, that participate because they feel like they're adding something to the community in which they operate.
Yeah, that's right.
Actually worked on that purposefully.
Yeah.
Yep. Thank you, trustee Noel. Trustee Shelby, please.
In my excitement, I hit my elbow. First and foremost, I just want to say thank you, remembering this from its inception to now, just kudos in how far that you have come. And I would say this, the, the last piece, I think you said, detection? You know, that may take a little time. Sometimes people want to see demonstrated results over a period of time to really understand where enforcement can be helpful, and so don't lose hope on that, right? It may not transpire now, but it may transpire in a few years. This is my question, though. Was there any, I'm curious about the narrative feedback from attorneys that you reached out to, to, to respond to this. Where, I mean, were people like, this is great, this is good, this is something that I'm already doing? I mean, did you get any pushback? I didn't see the narrative feedback, and I was just curious to, to get some thoughts.
No, that's a great question. And again, I don't want to take up too much time. I know you have another scheduled item, but generally, the response has been panic? Because I think a lot of people don't know how to operate a client trust account. And so they, they know they've been doing it wrong, and they're worried about what the, about the state bar finding out about it. And what we've been trying to tell them is that, that our goal with CTAP is to remediate that, right? Is to correct that behavior, to teach them how to do it correctly and to get them doing it correctly. And in my book, if somebody says during a, a compliance review or whatever, says, hey, look, I'm not doing this right, can you help me? And we show that to them, and they go out and they do it correctly from then on, that's a win in my book.
Yeah, I mean, the goal really is, in my mind, you know, for all of the, you know, the mandated, the mandated bank reporting that happens when you have overdrafts, like if we could just start there with, you know, the majority of them are mistakes, right? And so look how much time it takes for the attorney, for OCTC, for everyone to resolve it as if, but if we could give them the tools and say, hey, here's how to do it, this is how much time you need, you got to set it aside. I think we can see a reduction of those. And I know in speaking with the teachers of the CTA class, this is frequently asked, okay, this is great, I know what to do, how do I do it? Where do I go get this information? So they were really excited with a practical guide that, you know, and we're going to set it up so that it's a video that's pre-recorded, you could stop, take your time, you'll have examples. So I really want to make sure that people feel confident that they can do it. And I really believe it's going to weed out the people that are just making mistakes because they don't know versus the intentional acts.
And to that end, the, the people who are panicked, that's, that's a good sign, right? Because they, they do want to do the right thing. And I'm assuming that, that we're exercising some discretion in this initial transitionary period to, to, you know, not be referring people to OCTC who clearly are just trying to learn the rules and, and not purposely, you know, doing, doing wrong things.
No, absolutely. That's, that's the goal, is to, is to educate them and get them doing the right thing. And now, of course, if there's something egregious, we're going to refer that, but, but short of that, the, the goal is to, to remediate that behavior and get them on the right track. And frankly, as Jennifer implied, getting them looking at that time doing their trust accounting as an investment in their business, right? That's, they're really growing their business and being a, a better business person by spending that time.
Right on, thank you. Trustees Sisnetos.
Thank you. I just want to congratulate both of you and, and the staff. I mean, the incredibly short amount of time that you guys took to stand this up is incredible, and the results speak volumes. So congratulations and thank you for that. It's, it's amazing.
Thank you. It was really Leah, I only got here in October, so it was Leah and IT and a number of others.
I did have one quick thought on the, I mean, 30-plus billion dollars. About time we get our arms wrapped around that and talk about public safety. I think it was around 10,000 or more, you said unclaimed accounts of one type or another, even IOTA accounts, I think it was. I very much appreciate the efforts that you'll undertake to identify where those belong. I wouldn't be surprised if many of them are, are long dormant accounts. And then we'll have to go through a whole process of, well, what happens now to that? There's, of course, state laws and all sorts of things about that, that, that would make sense. But when you're collecting the information on those, which makes a lot of sense, give me the name, give me all the identifying information. You might also want to ask for activity, his, history of activity, because you may find some that for five or 10 or more years have had no activity, which would certainly flag a dormant account.
Yeah, that's absolutely correct.
Thanks.
All right, great, thank you, everyone. So recall that we have a essential advisor we need to, to, thank you, both of you. We, we need to participate in our closed session. So there was some discussion of perhaps changing our evening plans so that we could have a working closed session, not have to, to go out to dine, just basically stay here as, as long as anybody can to get into closed session. So I'm going to take a look around the room and on the screen and make sure folks are generally okay with that.
So I know that I have a hard stop at 5:30. And so I don't know how long closed session is going to go.
Yeah, I'm anticipating at the real estate item to go probably until 5:30. And that leaves everything else. Real estate, I'm not sure how long it'll take, but certainly the finance committee might have a better idea.
In the future, it would be wonderful to know this in advance.
Yeah, we just did this on the fly.
And then that way can plan appropriately, because closed session is really important, and I know we're dealing with some key items.
Yep. Why don't we do this? Why don't we open with the closed session with that one item, go into closed session, and then see how the timing is? And certainly we can continue the closed session tomorrow after the open session times if we need to. Okay.
I do want to say that based on the earlier discussion, we did cancel the dinner reservation. So definitely, there's no group dinner. Their staff is prepared to order dinner in, so the, the board needs to decide what it wants to do.
Okay.
At some point.
Well, so let's, let's get into closed session first and do that, that piece of, of administrative stuff in the closed session. I will make the required announcement under Bagley Keen. So pursuant to Government Code Section 1126A, 1126A1, 1126C2, C7, E1, and Government Code Section E2BI, two cases, we will now move into closed session to consider the items listed on our closed session agenda. Thank you, everyone, for your participation in the open session today. We will continue with more important and fun business tomorrow. Thank you.
And trustees, you should have received the closed session link just now.
All right, everyone, good evening. It is just about 6:38, coming up on 6:39. The Board of Trustees commenced the closed session, did not finish its business, so I am going to recess the closed session till tomorrow morning at 9:00 AM. Look forward to seeing everyone there. We will open the meeting in public tomorrow at 9:00 AM before we convene back into closed session. Thank you, everyone, have a good evening.